Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the City Council chambers. Our invocation tonight will be from Associate Pastor Scott Cheshire from the Memorial Baptist Church. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father God, as we gather here today in the heart of Popper Bluff, we seek your guidance and your wisdom. Grant us the clarity to make decisions that uplift our community and reflect your values of justice, compassion, and integrity. Inspire us to work together with unity and purpose, always keeping the best interest of our city and its residents at the forefront. Bless our leaders with discernment and our discussions with a constructive spirit. May our efforts today contribute to a brighter future for Popper Bluff and its residents. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
... of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Real call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilman Boyer?
Here.
Councilwoman Horton?
Here.
Councilman Smith?
Here.
Councilman Massingham?
Here.
Councilman DePue?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Carson?
Here.
Mayor Cornman?
Here.
You have seven present.
Item five, disclosure of interests. Any member of the City Council may disclose any possible conflict or interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda with any matter discussed in previous meeting. Seeing none, item six are citizens' input. Each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the City Council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Seeing none. Item seven, workshop items for discussion. Item A, the City Council will consider authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the Community Development Block Grant Program for funding for the repair of various city streets. Manager Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is a request related to the public hearing we held at our last meeting to apply for a Community Development Block Grant to fund repairs and paving of several city streets. The grant would cover the cost of the asphalt and the street department would provide the labor. The streets included in the application will be Ninth Street from Main to Park, Park Avenue from Westwood to Fifth, Fifth Street from Vine to Park, Relief from Main to Cole, Main Street from Baron to Wilcox, Woodstone, North Sea Street from Pine to Bartlett, Sunset from Woodhaven to Holloway, and Cravens Road from where KJX is at down to the Manufacturing Assistance Group. The in-kind contribution is estimated at $125,000. Brian Rosener from the Ozark Foothills Regional Planning Commission who's writing the grant is here tonight if you have any questions for him. And also Jerry Lawson is in attendance as well if you have any specific questions about the streets. I believe the application deadline is September the 7th. It's this coming Friday, whatever date that might be. And so that's why we are asking for you to workshop and vote this item this evening.
Make a motion, move this to tonight's voting session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, the City Council will consider authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the Community Development Block Grant Program for funding for repairs and renovations to the Margaret Harwell Art Museum. Manager Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We also held a public hearing at our last meeting regarding this application, another request for a Community Development Block Grant for funding for repairs and renovations to the Margaret Harwell Art Museum. The grant request will be $500,000 with a cash match from the city of $69,000. Again, Brian Rosener who's writing the application is here tonight if you have any questions. And also Steve Whitworth is in attendance if you had any specific questions for him regarding the museum.
I'll make a motion as we move to the voting session to be held tonight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, the City Council will consider a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding a zoning designation for property to be annexed into the city limits. Property is located at 123 Market Lane and owned by Dennis and Karen Haste. City Planner James Sisk, two present.
Again, this is a residential piece of property that was purchased and they discovered that it was not in the city. There are other properties that surround it are already in the city. They book in both sides of this property. And been planning and zoning and this is all rural residential out there, so RS1 is a recommendation.
Make a motion to move this to the October 7th voting session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the City Council will consider a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve a conditional use permit to operate a wholesale business in a C2 general commercial zone district located at 209 North Eighth Street. The applicant is Cody Harris. Mr. Sisk?
So this property, it says North Eighth Street. This is the mini mall that is across from the Catholic Church on Highway 60, or Pine Street, sorry. This is an existing business that is upstairs, is wanting to use the basement as wholesale and warehousing, and they need a conditional use to do so.
All right, I had a question on that and you just answered it. So, yeah, it looked like when you looked that up on Google Maps, it's that old house across the street.
Yes, it's the basement of the...
Okay. Is this wholesale business storage for the existing business or is there going to be wholesale products distributed out from this place to other areas?
It's my understanding that it will be wholesale products, it'll be about the same as their retail business upstairs. However, most of it will just be storage. I don't think it's pickup.
Okay, so I was wondering what the impact might be on it.
It will be up into the general public now.
Okay.
I make the motion to move it to the voting session to be held tonight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, the City Council will consider a recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission to vacate a 16 by 150 platted undeveloped alleyway between Alice and North Fifth Street for future commercial development. Mr. Sisk?
This alleyway lies in a block where Recycling Grace is building their new maternity center. And this alleyway that was never developed and does not have any utilities in it splits their property. And they have applied for us to vacate that property so that their lots are all contained in this, and their parking lot can get across that.
I'm making a question. I had a question on that one. On the amazing Recycling Grace property, that is on the south side of this alleyway and on the north side of the alleyway?
Correct.
Correct, okay. So that's the alleyway that's kind of down in that swale. It's not, what is that, was it Pershing or...
Actually, in the very bottom, that's a street right away. The alleyway is to the north of that with a lot on either side, so.
So it's not that street undeveloped?
It's not in the very bottom, no. It's about halfway up.
Okay. Yeah, so there's nothing, nothing there. It's where, it's kind of in there where it's been bulldozed already?
Yes. It'll be about center where the property's already been.
Okay, great. Yeah, originally I was thinking it was up on top of the hill there where the street...
No, there's actually a street there.
Okay, thanks.
I make a motion, move that to the voting session to be held tonight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'm sorry.
The City Council will consider a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission to vacate a 60 by 150 unflatted... Have we already did...
No.
Okay, that's what I started saying, it sounded exactly the same thing here, starting to run together on me. Item F, the City Council will consider authorizing the mayor to enter into a cost-share supplemental agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission relative to phases 1A and 1B of the Highway 67 expansion project. Manager Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is the first of two supplemental agreements between the city and the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission relative to the expansion of Highway 67 that we'll discuss tonight. This specific agreement is related to phases 1A and 1B. In the original cost-share agreement, the city would have been responsible for all cost overruns, which it would have projected to have been about $8.78 million. With this supplemental agreement, MoDOT is sharing the cost of projected overruns, and the city's anticipated financial responsibility will be reduced to $7,845,622. So it's, they're using some of their MoDOT funding to cover some of that difference that was originally going to be our responsibility. They are trying to get 1B. 1A, of course, is done. 1B and 2, they're trying to get out to bid this fall. This is why I am asking that you workshop and vote this item and the following item this evening.
Will this cost share come out of the Highway 67 tax?
The city's responsibility?
Yeah.
Is funded by the Highway 67 tax, yes.
So, question, the, reading through all those documents, it's kind of hard to, if you're not familiar with the whole process. 1A is the intersection, the interchange there, 16.
Yes.
1B is the section of Four Lane, a few miles south of that.
1A is what's completed, the intersect, the interchange there, and then 1B will be the next mile, and then phase 2 will be the next two miles after that.
1B is the two miles after that?
1B would be one mile, and then 2 would be two miles.
So 1A is completed, but we haven't paid our portion of it yet?
We are, we have, the city has borrowed money through the Missouri Finance Commission, Transportation Finance Commission. We have loans secured, we are paying on those loans to the Highway 67 tax.
And that's our one cent sales tax?
Yes, half cent. Half cent.
Half cent, okay. All right.
I make a motion, move this to the voting session to be held tonight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, the City Council will consider authorizing the mayor to enter into a cost-share supplemental agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission relative to phase 2 of the Highway 67 expansion project. Manager Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So again, this is just a supplement to the original cost-share agreement we had with the Missouri Highway Transportation Commission. Based on new estimates, the city's responsibility was expected to be a little over $9.5 million. With this supplemental agreement, that responsibility has been reduced to $6,868,213. And that's projected, you know, we'll, the exact amounts will be determined when the bids are open, but it significantly reduced our responsibility on phase 2.
Again, is that phase 2 is additional miles beyond?
Yes.
One?
Yes.
And it's like four more miles?
Two.
Two more miles?
Yes.
And then what you said, two more miles?
Yes.
Yes, I got it.
And those, in that, in those cost-share agreements, it spells out from what county road to what county road that will actually cover. It may be, it may be a little more than two miles, that's just an estimate, so.
Does that have any effect on the governor's budget for the I-57 project?
No.
No effect?
No.
I'll make a motion, move this to tonight's voting session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item H, the City Council will consider amending the fiscal year 2024 budget relative to the American Rescue Plan Act monies to fund the demolition of derelict properties. Manager Winters?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this request is actually submitted by David Boyer and Lisa Parson, so I will let them discuss. I will say is, there is a current balance of $146,953 of ARPA funds remaining.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to read a statement.
Go right ahead.
Okay. Reason we put this on the agenda tonight is, when I campaigned to be elected to the City Council, one of my important issues was to encourage residential and commercial property improvements. While there are many beautiful, maintained homes in Popper Bluff, unfortunately, there are also property owners who do not maintain their properties. Many of these abandoned, burnt, or unmaintained properties are so derelict they are beyond repair and are public nuisances and are dangerous. Where these properties exist, they decrease the quality of life for their neighbors and decrease the property values in the neighborhoods and destroy the incentive for anyone to invest in new construction, quality remodeling, or even to show pride of ownership through normal maintenance. This results in these neighborhoods becoming known as undesirable. That's not fair to these neighbors, the neighborhoods, and the city. So, general fund portions of the city budget, they're extremely tight, and the residents expect a lot from the city to provide all of our necessary services. There's very little money available in the general fund portion of the budget for use by the taxpayers to protect the neighborhoods from the inaction of irresponsible property owners. City budget allocates less than $30,000 a year to demolish derelict houses. Our street department has assigned this duty and is very efficient at doing this work. They've had quite a bit of practice at it, and they know how to do it. However, the funds allocated and the available street department employees cannot keep up with the growing number of houses needing demolition. The number of houses currently on the demolition list is over 80, with many more that should be added. The ARPA funds that Mr. Winters referred to as American Rescue Recovery Act funds provided to Popper Bluff, the original amount was almost about approximately $3.5 million. Approximately 96% of these funds have been spent on many important projects, equipment and vehicles for the city. The remaining 4% of these funds must be committed to a project by the end of this year and the work completed by the end of next year. I recommend the remaining ARPA funds be allocated to a contract to demolish as many additional derelict houses as can be completed with these funds. For the citizens hearing about this issue tonight or reading about it in the Daily American Republic, please let your councilperson know what you think about this issue. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Parsons, would you like to add anything to that?
We've done a lot of work in my ward and all the wards in the city of getting houses torn down, and in my ward alone, I've already seen the improvements that is done in the value of properties going up and people just taking pride in ownership of their homes. And so I think it'll be a great way to spend this money. I wish we had more that we could do, but this will be a good step. And if you see somebody's house next door to you that's terrible shape and it's either torn down or fixed up, I think it makes you want to do better for your house, so that's what we're hoping for.
Roar, go right ahead.
As you may not know, and I think if you do, a couple of weeks ago, we had our ten-wheeler catch on fire for the second time. It's a 2011 Freightliner truck. It is a dump truck that has the heavy snowplow on the front, has a 1,600 gallon tank in the back that spreads salt brine.
Jerry, can you get a little closer to my microphone?
And we had a insurance adjuster come down. He gave us a estimate of the damages, and it's yet to be known for sure. The fire was up under the cab, so he wasn't able to really get a good look. This truck has been on fire once before. It was a year old, and since then, we've had chronic issues with it. I can't imagine a second fire is going to do it any good. This being said, this is a key snow and ice pre-treat vehicle in our fleet. I realize that Mr. Boyers and Lisa and everybody else up here has the same feelings of derelict houses. I'm just going to ask, if this doesn't have to be allocated till the end of the year, could we possibly table a decision on this or not, depending on how you all look at it, to possibly see if this truck can be repaired to be of use? If not, we will be missing a key component in the snow removal.
Did he get some cost estimates on replacing it?
He gave us an estimate of $11,000.
No, no, to replace it?
Oh, replace the truck. The truck is, it's a ten-wheel truck. It's a 16-ton capacity truck, and the truck is probably going to run somewhere between $170,000 to $200,000. Like I said, not in our plan for this to have happened. It's a big expense to even put in for next year's budget, plus we wouldn't have it in time for this winter. We have found a few around or seen some that would be available, and like I said, I'm just asking, give it time, give the Truck Center time to look at it and make an evaluation, see if they can possibly get it fixed before snow season gets here. And if they can, well, we're in good shape and everything else. But I just wanted you all, this council, to be aware that this truck could be unoperable for this upcoming snow season.
How old's the truck? Is it under?
It's a 2011.
2011, so it's not under warranty?
Oh, no.
So there's no insurance, it's self-insured by the city?
Well, the insurance, the adjuster wouldn't, there wasn't enough damage to total it. And like I said, we're not really sure the extent until Tag Truck Center gets the cab off of the truck to find out. It took five fire extinguishers and a water hose to put it out. Fire Department got there just as we got it put out, but...
So the truck may or may not be salvageable?
Well, yeah, I really don't know, David. I mean, like I said...
When did they expect to have it looked at? At the estimate?
The gentleman we talked about, or talked with at Tag, said when we could get it out there, they would try to expedite it to...
So they don't have it yet out there?
They don't have a clue yet, no.
They don't have the truck out there yet at Tag?
Oh, no, but they could find one, or actually, they found one already.
No, no, to give you an estimate for repairs?
No, the truck's not out there. Like I said, the insurance adjuster thought it would be somewhere in the $11,000 to $12,000 range. And most everything is electrical. It's, it did melt fuel lines, some hydraulic lines, some air lines, and there is a hydraulic pump that works the plow off the front that we don't know what kind of shape it's in yet.
So the repairs that would be done to the truck, is that something that your guys would do or that Tag would do?
No, we're going to, we're going to let Tag do it. It's, yeah, it's something that they're going to be more familiar with seeing in this scenario. And this way, if they say they fix it and there's an issue, it can go back and instead of being on us to say, well, we had it fixed and now we're out of money and everything else, so.
And so when are you taking the truck out to Tag?
We'll have to get Russians or one of the big record companies to actually tow it. It's not operable.
Do you think you'll have an estimate for Tag by October 7?
Oh, I think, I think that would be very realistic, yes.
Well, I would suggest that we go ahead and pass it to the voting session. I mean, that's, I'm making a motion and then let Jerry and Matt kind of keep us informed of what's going on with that, and we can make a decision then.
I just wanted you all to be informed of where we were. I know Kyle spoke to Lisa the other night at P&amp;Z, and I hadn't even really thought it. It was just business as usual down at the street department. It happened on a Monday, so it just set the tone for the whole week, and I hadn't really given it a lot of thought until we found out how bad it was, and so.
Did you say this is the second fire?
Yes, this truck's been on fire once before.
How long ago?
It was a year old, so I guess about 2012.
Are you guessing it's the same cause?
We aren't sure exactly what this one was. The guy that was assigned to it went down, got it out of the truck shed, pulled it up by his personal vehicle, got out to get his lunchbox turned around, and it was a big smoke bomb and immediately turned into a fire, and a little bigger fire, and a little bigger fire, and it was like, yeah, this is getting interesting now, and so. Like I said, just another Monday.
Who fixed it last time? Who worked on it?
Oh, I have no idea, Mr. Mayor. It was before my...
I got you.
Before I came over to the street department. I will say this, and the guys have told me ever since it's been fixed, you may hit the wipers or hit the turn signal and the wipers may come on once or twice.
He might get a horn, he might get the wipers.
And the truck has been known to be going down the road and just die, so like I said, I don't expect, I don't expect this to be any, a good thing that happened to it, that it may still be operational at some extent.
So if this truck were to be replaced, would that be a salvage unit then?
That would probably end up being something that we would say, okay, it stays in the city limits. We're not going to use this truck to haul rock or anything. If it can even be fixed and be halfway reliable, it would be, it would be a good asset to go into townhouses now, and you'd have another truck staying within the city limits with a larger capacity to put crushed-up houses in too. So that's all, I just wanted to share that with you all.
So you made a motion?
I made a motion to pass to the voting session.
So I'll second to move it to the voting session, October 7.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item A, action required items, AA, Bill Number 8579. The City Council will take action on an ordinance amending Section 520.210 of the Code of Ordinances entitled "Application."
Motion for first reading of Bill Number 8579?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance amending the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri's Code of City Ordinances, Chapter 520, Article 3, Part 2, Section 520.210, relating to the application for electricians.
Make a motion for a second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance amending the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri's Code of City Ordinances, Chapter 520, Article 3, Part 2, Section 520.210, relating to the application for electricians.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Real call, Clerk Phelps?
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePue?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
You have seven yeses.
Bill Number 8579 has been adopted. BB, Bill Number 8580. The City Council will take action on an ordinance amending the City of Popper Bluff fiscal year 2024 budget.
Motion for first reading of Bill Number 8580?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance amending the 2024 fiscal year budget for the City of Popper Bluff.
Make a motion for a second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance amending the 2024 fiscal year budget for the City of Popper Bluff.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Real call, Clerk Phelps?
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePue?
Yes.
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
You have seven yeses.
Bill Number 8580 has been adopted. CC, Bill Number 8581. The City Council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Smith &amp; Company Engineers for engineering services relative to the Pine Street Crossing Project Number AP-510014.
Make a motion for a first reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri to execute a contract between the City of Popper Bluff and SH Smith &amp; Company for engineering and inspection services relative to the Pine Street pedestrian crossing.
Motion for second reading of Bill Number 8581?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Popper Bluff and SH Smith &amp; Company for engineering and inspection services relative to the Pine Street pedestrian crossing.
Motion for adoption of Bill Number 8581?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Real call, Clerk Phelps?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman... Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Bill Number 8581 has been adopted. Bill Number 8582. The City Council will take action on an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to operate a wholesale business located in a C2 General Commercial Zone District located at 209 North 8th Street.
Make a motion for a first reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to Cody Harris for the operation of a wholesale business at 209 North 8th Street in Popper Bluff, Missouri.
Motion for second reading of Bill Number 8582?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance granting a conditional use permit to Cody Harris for the operation of a wholesale business at 209 North 8th Street in Popper Bluff.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Bill Number 8582 has been adopted. EE, Bill Number 8583. The City Council will take action on an ordinance vacating a platted, underdeveloped, alleyway line between Alice and North 5th Street.
Make a motion for a first reading of Bill 8583.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance vacating a platted but undeveloped alleyway between Alice and North 5th Streets in Popper Bluff.
Motion for second reading of Bill Number 8583?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance vacating a platted but undeveloped alleyway between Alice and North 5th Streets in Popper Bluff.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Bill Number 8583 has been adopted. FF, Bill Number 8584. The City Council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a cost-share supplemental agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission relative to Phases 1A and 1B of the Highway 67 Expansion Project.
Motion for first reading of Bill Number 8584?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a supplemental intergovernmental cost-share agreement between the City of Popper Bluff and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission relative to the Highway 67 Project Phase 1A and Phase 1B.
Make a motion for a second reading.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a supplemental intergovernmental cost-share agreement between the City of Popper Bluff and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission relative to the Highway 67 Project Phase 1A and 1B.
Motion for adoption of Bill Number 8584?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Bill Number 8584 has been adopted. GG, Bill Number 8585. The City Council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a cost-share supplemental agreement with the Missouri Highway and Transportation Commission relative to Phase 2 Highway 67 Expansion Project.
Motion for first reading of Bill Number 8585?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a supplemental intergovernmental cost-share agreement between the City of Popper Bluff and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission relative to the Highway 67 Project Phase 2.
Make a motion for a second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a supplemental intergovernmental cost-share agreement between the City of Popper Bluff and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission relative to the Highway 67 Project Phase 2.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Bill Number 8585 has been adopted. HH, Resolution Number 2040. The City Council will take action on a resolution making an appointment to the Arts and Museum Advisory Board.
Motion for reading of Resolution 2040?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
A resolution of the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri making an appointment to the Popper Bluff Arts and Museum Advisory Board of the City of Popper Bluff.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Resolution Number 2040 has been adopted. II, Resolution Number 2041. The City Council will take action on a resolution making appointments to the Green Forest Community Improvement District Board of Directors.
Make a motion for a reading of Resolution 2041.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
A resolution of the City of Popper Bluff, Missouri making appointments to the Green Forest Community Improvement District Board of Directors.
Motion for adoption of Resolution 2041?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Resolution Number 2041 has been adopted. JJ, Resolution 2042. The City Council will take action on a resolution authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the Community Development Block Grant Program for funding for the repair of various city streets.
Motion for reading of Resolution 2042?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Popper Bluff authorizing the city to submit a grant application to the Community Development Grant Block Grant Program for funding for repairs of various city streets.
Motion for adoption of Resolution 2042?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any questions or discussion? Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
I have a question here. I guess I'm reading the wrong one.
JJ.
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Resolution Number 2042 has been adopted. Item KK, Resolution 2043. The City Council will take action on a resolution authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the Community Development Block Grant Program for funding for repairs and renovations to the Margaret Harwell Art Museum.
Make a motion for a reading of Resolution 2043.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Popper Bluff authorizing the city to submit a grant application to the Community Development Block Grant Program for a grant for repairs and renovations to the Margaret Harwell Art Museum and authorizing the mayor and city officials to execute all documents related thereto.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, Clerk Phelps.
Councilman Boyer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Massingham?
Yes.
Councilman DePew?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Parson?
Yes.
Mayor Cornman?
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Resolution Number 2043 has been adopted. Item 9, our City Manager's Report. Andrew Winter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. The Red Cross, there's a Red Cross blood drive on September 11th from 12:30 to 5:30 at the Black River Coliseum. It's actually a fundraiser that is coordinated by Legacy Marketing and the Ozark Federal Credit Union. So if they have at least 30 donors, the Red Cross will donate $10 per unit of blood collected to the animal shelter. So encourage you all to sign up and give blood on September 11th for a good cause to support our Popper Bluff Animal Shelter. Something anybody that was here for the last time is looking forward to, I'm sure, the Union Pacific Big Boy Engine 4014 is scheduled to make a stop in Popper Bluff on Thursday, September 12th. The planned arrival right now is late afternoon, kind of waiting to kind of get closer, we'll get a more specific time. It's, if you didn't get to see it last time, make sure to make a point to come and see it. It really is impressive. They're actually working on some, maybe some more involvement from, from you as a council. They're talking about maybe doing a proclamation maybe that day and doing some things like that. So it'll be, it's a, it's a really great event. It's a great sight to see and there'll be a crowd of people downtown. The last time they came, James Sisk was telling me all about it and I'm like, yeah, it's a train. What's the big deal? Thousands of people will be here to come look at this, this engine. It's really, it's really awesome.
Do we know if it's gonna be here overnight?
It is gonna be here overnight. There'll be a window of time where it will be open to the public on display downtown. Like I said, as we get closer, we'll know more specific about the time, but we'll be late afternoon. Lori told me I couldn't say too much tonight because she wasn't, she didn't want to cry. So I won't say too much tonight. But this is, of course, my last City Council meeting. It's definitely a bittersweet night for me. It's been a privilege and an honor to serve the City Council, the employees of the City of Popper Bluff and the citizens of the City of Popper Bluff, the City Manager for the last four years. You know, it's, I've always looked forward to coming to work. I, I've enjoyed my job and a lot of it has to do with the people that I get to work with. We have an incredible staff. We have some amazing department heads that, to be quite honest, they make me look good. So you know, you surround yourself with people that are good at their jobs and they definitely have, have made me look good and have made the council look good for things that they have done and, and over the years. And I'm proud of all of them and I'm gonna miss them all. You know, we've, we've, we've had our ups and our downs and we've seen some, some, some good things and that, you know, there's, I started making a list of the other day and I'm like, I don't even want to, that's, you know, it is a long list.